Adam Mosip.
Here.
James Thorpe, President, and President Petlicoff.
Here. Next, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, Dr. Joshua Tynan, Principal of Nowland Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone, please stand.
Good evening. I'm actually gonna let Ms. Filetti, our third grade teacher, introduce her students.
Hello, everyone. These are my third grade students, Colin, Alyssa, and Olivia, who will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done.
Thank you.
Colin? Thank you very much for coming tonight. Oh, Alyssa, very good. Thank you so much for coming tonight. And you are Olivia. Thank you so much. Good job. All right then. Thank you, students. Next item, please.
New Board Member Oath of Office. Board Member Adam Mosip will take the oath of office at this time, administered by Susan Dabaja, City Council President. Susan Dabaja and Adam Mosip will stand, and with right hands raised, Ms. Dabaja will ask him to repeat after her the following oath of office.
Good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
Trustee Mosip, please raise your right hand. And I'll go slow. All right. Repeat after me. I do hereby swear and affirm.
I do hereby swear and affirm.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the Office of Trustee of the School District of the City of Dearborn.
The duties of the Trust.
Office of the trustee.
Office of the trustee of the City District of Dearborn.
Of the School District of Dearborn.
School District of Dearborn.
And to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
In the manner provided by law.
In the manner provided by law.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Trustee Mosip. Just for everyone's edification here, Trustee Mosip, this is his second ceremonial swearing, and it's actually his third oath, because he's required by law to take it 10 days after we appointed him. So he is duly sworn in at every level. Thank you.
Can I say a few words?
Certainly.
President, thank you. I'm truly honored and humbled to join the Boards of Trustees, to serve our students, our parents, and our teachers and staff. This has been a journey for me, and I'm truly honored again. I'd like to thank our amazing Council President, Susan Dabaja, for administering the oath. I'd like to also thank my wife, who's here with me. Thank you for being with me all this time and bearing with me. So I'm really excited to work with you, my colleagues, to advance our schools and to make sure that we're putting students first and we're building on the successes that we've had. So thank you so much for this honor again. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mary.
Yes, Trustee Barry.
I just wanted to say that this past month, I've been very, not surprised, but very impressed with Trustee Mosip. He hit the ground running. You know, thank you for that. So if you're a supporter of Trustee Mosip or don't know him, get to know him. I feel that you'll be confident that he'll be serving our district and our students to the best of his ability. So thank you.
Next item, please.
Superintendents, update. Agenda items.
So first, just wanted to start with, we're gonna, we have a passing of a couple of good friends to Dearborn Schools. First, I just want to mention Mr. Russ Gibb. Mr. Gibb was instrumental in the ongoing success of the video program over at Dearborn High. For more than 25 years, he taught hundreds of students, many going on to achieve great success in all areas of video, television, motion pictures, advertising, and other fields related to multimedia production. However, Mr. Gibb's real legacy was his ability to connect with students of all backgrounds and abilities. He was an advocate for children and always acted in the best interest of students. Mr. Gibb was a teacher, but he was also a motivator and mentor to all that passed through his classroom. In April of 2017, the Board approved naming the Dearborn High Video Program after Mr. Gibb. And I think we'll all remember that presentation where the power went out halfway through the presentation during those electrical storms. So we have Mr. Gibb, and then we also learned of, you know, the passing of Pam Adams, former trustee. Served on the Board from '96 to 2014. When she decided not to run for reelection, she was dealing with some health concerns. She was actually at my event at the Renaissance Center for my award with the state when I gave that address back in February. She was part of the Board that developed the successful 2002 bond that brought four new schools to the district, as well as the 2013 Smart Bond. Both of these have helped to serve the needs of the students while being fiscally responsible to the community. During her 19 years on the Board, she also served during the expansion of the bilingual program, district-wide boundary line changes, creation and expansion of state-funded preschool, and the creation of collegiate academy. And I know that arrangements are being made for her memorial that's coming up. So I'd like us to observe a moment of silence for the passing of both of these individuals, please. Thank you.
Yes, Trustee Barry.
Regarding former trustee Pam Adams, God bless her soul. When I first came on the Board, didn't know her that well, it didn't take me long to learn that she, what was in her heart, what was in the best interest of this district and the students. She loved our teachers. She loved the PTA. She was a big advocate for our students. In 2014, when Pam first became ill, I was chairing the Board then. I heard that she wanted to resign, and I know Trustee McDonald and I visited her, and I said, "If you put in your resignation, we're not gonna accept it. We'll figure something out." And we did. The Board did figure out that. We let her finish out her term, went through phone calls.
Through Skyping.
Yeah, through Skyping and phone calls. So she served us for, I believe, 22 years, it was said.
No, 18 to 19 years.
She served us for almost two decades.
Almost two decades.
You know, I was honored to serve with her. Pam, we miss you, and we will always think of you with these meetings. Thank you.
Awesome. Yes, thank you. Yes, Trustee Elaine.
Yeah, I'd like to say also, I worked many years with Pam. I mean, I joined most of my tenure on the Board. And when I first won election, I made a statement to the press saying that I thought the Board was acting in a stodgy manner. They were stodgy. And she, yeah, and she told me later that she didn't like the comment. She was very honest about it, but she was the first person to reach out and contact me. Almost everyone who served with her will have seen her at some point or another tear up and get emotional. You know, during so many emotional times in our district when 9/11, I mean, and passing of so many people along the way, our journeys through life. We have people come, we have people go, and Pam was always here with a tear in her eye. Not that she wasn't thinking, but just that she had a great heart, and she had a great heart for students generally. She worked tirelessly as a PTA leader, and individually, she was a warm and caring person. So I will miss her very much also. But Dr. Maliko, I think they have set a memorial service for May 30 at 4 o'clock, and I believe it's at Park Place.
Yes. They would, the family would like, if anyone is interested, to visit the How Peterson, the Dearborn How Peterson website, to, they have an e-vite there so that they can know how many individuals they may be anticipating attending the memorial service on May 30. So if you're interested and want to RSVP, that would be very helpful. The daughters have contacted some of us and let us know that that's how they would like to handle the memorial. I knew Pam first through PTA, and then as a Board member. And she was a great friend. I was in contact with her all this time. And while she struggled with her health in these last few years, she was still very much interested in what was happening in the district. And Pam used to always say, "If you are making your decision in the best interest of the students, then you're not going to go wrong." And yes, Pam was extremely emotional. She would tear up very easily, but she always was quick to let you know where she stood. And I missed her the moment I heard of her passing, and it's, I would call her regularly to discuss my worries and concerns, even to this day, to make sure that I wasn't missing something in my thought processes. So I really enjoyed the conversations that we had. Unfortunately, she didn't win this last fight that she had. But I'm sure she's going to be looking down on us and directing something up there. Hopefully, it'll be positive, and maybe the sun will come out. So I'm sure we'll all miss her. Yes, Roxanne.
I just want to add a couple of things to what's been said. When I first came on the Board, I did know Pam from PTA and prior, but when I first came on the Board, she was the very first person to call me and ask me to meet with her. And we did, and she gave me her point of view on a lot of things and kind of said, you know, "This is, you shouldn't do this, and this is what you should do," that kind of thing. And I soaked it all up. But just in general, she was a wonderful mentor and took me under her wing. She answered my questions. She helped guide me when I was not sure about how to handle things. And the whole community has just suffered so many great losses in the last few months. So just think about the wonderful legacy that a lot of people have left on Dearborn.
A lot of leadership, a lot of institutional knowledge that has.
Absolutely, and they will truly be missed.
Yes, absolutely.
And one other thing, just because she did that with me, I've tried to do the other, the same thing, because it was valuable for me to new Board members as they come on, meet with them and kind of answer their questions.
Absolutely, I do too.
Guide them a little bit, help them out, because you have no idea what the job entails until you're actually here.
And everybody can always have.
A different.
And a need to have a sounding board.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Always. All right then. Thank you. Next item.
Your choice. Yeah. So I have Zainab and Ibrahim are gonna speak to the retirements. We're giving them some duties as their role. We're glad to have them here and very excited. So we'll ask them to come up to the podium.
I thought you meant they were retiring. So that was a short.
I'll just mention that May and June are the months that we get larger lists of retirements, and so we want to congratulate all our retirees, so we're gonna recognize them.
Suzanne Addison, three, over three years of service. Maria Ajami, over 21 years of service. Kimberly Bodkin, over 18 years of service. Lori Bush, over 30 years of service. Linda Sissadi, over 20 years of service. Joseph Cook, 23 years of service. Khalil Dequallala, over 34 years of service. Theresa Dewikalo, over 21 years of service. Allison Domke, 23 years of service. Ibrahim Elzer, 33 years of service. Leana Fassen, over 13 years of service. Heather Ferris, 24 years of service. Nadra Lombardi, over 20 years of service. John Lunders, 25 years of service. Carleen McBane, 30 years of service. Naima Maslamani, over 24 years of service. Bruce Pantaleo, 30 years of service. Brian Taylor, 25 years of service. Pamela Woods, over 14 years of service. Kathy Yankara, over 32 years of service. Mohammed Tibasi, over 11 and a half years of service. Virginia Ling Gefelter, 20, over 26 years of service.
The following donation has been offered to the School District. Acceptance of this donation is requested at this time. A donation of $1,625 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for BPA registration fees. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for newspaper equipment. A donation of $3,099.80 has been offered to Woodworth Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for TI-inspired calculators. A donation of $506 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for books. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Stout Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for music books. A donation of $1,200 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the ICD and CRSD to be used for PBIS. A donation of $200 has been offered to Salina Intermediate by Paramount Title Agency to be used for the 4th Grade Garden Club. A donation of $4,554.91 has been offered to Edsel Ford High School by Westbourne Chrysler to be used for automotive parts that will be used for lab activities and visual aids. A donation of two iPads has been offered to Nowland Elementary School by Jasmine's Voice to be used as communication tools for students with autism.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are you, okay, next.
Non-agenda items.
Okay, so we have some extra things that were added for this month, because last month, if you recall, we had the Board appointment process that we need to use the meeting.
And my apologies, I added all of this to the agenda tonight, so it's a little bit heavy.
So our presenters are gonna, a lot of this is responses to the Board on things that have come up, but we're gonna ask our presenters during the commentary to try to be, you know, brief, get to the point. And if there's questions, of course, the Board is welcome. So we're gonna have Mark Andrews come up right now about Trinity, response on some of the routes.
Good evening, trustees. As Dr. Maliko just mentioned, I'll try to be quick, but I wanted to try to put in context some information I was passed along in regards to some of the troubles our families were having with the Trinity Transportation Group. So with that information, real quick though, they provide 20, they performed 23 routes for us. So the information that we passed along, they divide that up into two terminals. They have 18 routes that come out of the Detroit West Terminal, and they have five that come out of the Wyandotte Terminal. So the information that we passed along was just out of the Detroit West Terminal, because that's where we experienced most of the troubles. So I just wanted to clarify that real quick. So looking at that information, when we go back and look at each month as a snapshot. So in January, out of the 18 routes, they had, we had 15 days that school was open, so they had 72 buses that were late during that month. So before I sent the information along, I kind of tweaked it a little bit. So I highlighted the yellow days or the times that they were late. And then I boldened them if they were over, if they were 15 minutes late. And then I put in red bold if they were 30 minutes or later, because in our industry, if it's 30 minutes or later, that's really considered a service failure. You know, anything under 15 minutes, as long as, depending on the frequency, that might not be their fault if it's under 15 minutes. But around 15 minutes and above, that's when we start looking at the transportation providers and seeing if it's their fault. So going back to January, they had 72 late buses, and five of those were 30 minutes or later. So, and when you look at it in retrospect, that's 25% of the routes that ran late that month. So when we look at February, they got a little bit worse. They had 95 late buses, and 11 of those were 30 minutes or later. And that ran about 30% of the routes ran late that month. Now, in that transition in February, because we were working with the Trinity Group, they brought in a new area manager to the Detroit West Terminal. And that's when we started seeing things improve. So going into March, they had 74 late buses, which translated to about 20% of their routes ran late. But I'd like to point out, they had zero routes that ran 30 minutes or later that month. And if you look at the data, almost all of them were five minutes or less. So that's, and then I can tell you from just the volume, we don't have the data for April yet, but the volume from our office, I can tell you, almost nailed to nothing any calls that we got from our families or the schools.
All right, Trustee Barry. I'll let the trustees go first.
I guess ultimately, we don't want to use an outside vendor, outside vendor. I mean, that's our ultimate goal. But with Trinity, are we under contract with them for a certain amount of years?
It expires. We're right now looking at putting out a bid, because their current contract expires July 1st.
July 1st. Okay, that answers my other question. Okay, thank you.
I too would rather not do any outside vendors in this area, but I understand the need for it. I'm glad things are improving, because I had several parents call me and say, you know, "This is an issue," especially with special needs students.
Right.
Because they need regiment. And sometimes, if things are not regimented, if they're expecting something and it doesn't happen, they just can spin out, and it's hard to get them back.
Yeah.
So more than anything, I wanted to bring this issue to your attention, just so people are aware of it, that you give us the information, look at it, and try to correct the situation, because it was getting a little out of hand. I'm glad things are getting better. And I'm curious, because there were some, and I've been told it's hard to track, but the frequency of like particular households, they're being late consistently. And then some of them that were 30 minutes late, some of them never even showed up. But the parents don't get any contact, or sometimes don't get contact.
And that was one of the, in February, when we were working with the Trinity Group.
Okay.
At that time, most of their office staff came up through the ranks as a driver.
Okay.
So when they were short drivers, their office staff were all going out on the road. So when we brought that to attention, that the communication was failing, that's when they hired on some permanent office staff, and that's where the communication improved from their office.
Okay. As long as we are contracting a service, I want to make sure that we get our money's worth, because it reflects bad on us when they don't do a good job.
Absolutely.
So that was my chief concern.
Yeah.
But I'm glad it's been addressed.
Trustee Mosip.
I do agree with Trustee McDonald. I mean, a parent would not know if they're Trinity or Dearborn Public Schools.
Exactly.
They are Dearborn Public Schools or representing us. My question is, is there any penalties in the contract if they're late this many times? Did we anticipate that?
Our current contract doesn't have any penalties, other than we're looking at putting out for bid, and we'll take bids from other vendors.
I think that would be a good point for the next contract, is to make sure that, you know, if this were to happen again, that there would be some consequences, and we're not just passing the buck. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee.
How long does the contract usually run for transportation? Is this a situation where maybe they're just on their best behavior, knowing it's coming up for renewal, and then if we do it long-term, it could go right back to where it was?
That's a good question. I don't believe that it was because of the length of the contract. But with that being said, what we're looking at right now is doing a one-year contract with the option of renewal for two more years. So it's not guaranteed for three years, but the options there if things are going well.
Thank you.
Okay, now I ask my questions. Number one, would it be fair to say that potentially some of the issues with the lateness might be seen with our own bus services when it comes to traffic conditions and/or students, getting students on and off the bus, and how, the length of time it takes to move the students on and off the bus? I'm going to assume, especially if it's like five minutes or 15.
So that's why I bolden the ones that were 15 minutes or later, because not for, not 100% of the time, but usually, under 15 minutes, it usually isn't, you know, the bus's problem or fault that it being late. It could be traffic. It could be weather. It could be because they're being a little bit more patient with, because these are all our special ed.
Right.
Families that they're providing services for. So we don't want them to be regimented, say, you know, one minute, two minutes, that's it. It's kind of a flowing, you know, if it's day by day, but now if it becomes a habit where we're waiting five or 10 minutes, then we'll, and our special ed department is great, we'll go to them and say, "We need to get some help with this student." You know, they're taking some time.
Right, right.
Exactly, to get on the bus.
Because I have, I have a special needs student on my block, and I see the amount of time it takes sometimes for them to come out of the house or to get the student off. And once you back it up at one stopping point, it's going to be backed up.
But that is a fair assumption. As long as I mentioned, the frequency isn't there. We'll look at the frequency. If it's late 10 minutes every day, then maybe there is something there in the bus route that we can adjust. But every now and then, if the one route is 15 minutes or less late, that very well could be because of traffic or because of other circumstances.
Okay, now, so then this goes to my next question, because we're gonna put out a bid, and I don't know what the, how we can vet any of these companies that we're going to have to rely on right now to not have a similar problem with them. What else can we do with the contract in order to try to mitigate those, these kinds of situations so that we don't just transfer the problem to another company?
Right. That's great. I'll get with Mike, you know, our purchasing director, and we'll try to work that out in the contract before we put it out.
Yeah, if there's something we can, we can adjust to try to help offset, that would be great.
Yeah.
We could look at other contracts, right, to see.
Yeah, you can do that.
Of other districts, I mean.
Oh, right. I guess you would have, you'd have to see what other districts say about the service that they're getting. Trustee Elaine.
Mr. Andrews, from what I've seen, what I've read, you've brought a fresh customer service orientation to transportation, and I appreciate that.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yes.
I'm happy you noticed that, because it was one of my goals.
Well, we picked the right man. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna keep moving this along. David Shannon and I believe Dr. Baller are just gonna briefly speak to the building use, fields and things during off-seasons.
The initial question that was asked by the Board was, "What is our policy on facility use?" I think this statement pretty much sums up the overall attitude and our outlook toward facility use, is that we want to make it, you know, our facilities available to the public as much as possible. Of course, there's always that balance between interfering with or taking up resources from the original intent, which is for our students. And then also, we do have neighborhood schools, which means that we are part of a neighborhood. And like any good neighbor, you want to cooperate with your neighbors, and you want to get along with your neighbors. And at the same time, if there are, if there are any concerns or problems going on, you want to address those so that you are a good neighbor. As far as our facility, the facility use with rentals, our buildings are used all the time. They are constantly being rented. A lot of it is recreation used by the city for programs such as basketball, swimming, baseball, and a number of other football, number of other programs as well. But beyond that, we have many, many other community groups who use our facilities for a variety of activities, including running schools. Running, we have two different Arabic schools that run in our schools on the weekends. This part of the webpage really shows the easy way where people can just access, if they're interested in renting facilities, they have to sign up to become a community user. It's very simple form. Our adult and community education program kind of facilitates the rental process. And this is the, this is the portal where you start that process at. So that's the official kind of technical side of things. Then there's just the common everyday use, and that kind of falls in that area of, "We are good neighbors." So our playgrounds are used by people in the neighborhood. Kids are out there. They use the playground equipment after school and on the weekends. They use the tracks for walking. Many, not just kids, but adults are doing that as well. Our past history, this has worked out very well. Had, really, this has been a good, good kind of partnership and relationship with the neighbors in and around our schools. And probably the only area that we've run into some difficulties is where some people have abused those facilities. So we have had adults come in and use the basketball courts that are outside, and they've used them late at night. used them late at night, they've used them to the point where they've created some damage. And more importantly, they've used them to the point that they have disrupted neighbors by the schools. And neighbors who live by schools, they expect a certain amount of activity around the school after school and on the weekends, and are usually pretty flexible about that. But when the problem becomes, you know, people there at ten, eleven, midnight, using the basketball facilities, creating a disturbance, and then, like I said, even vandalizing the facilities, that's where there's been a problem. And that's where we have allowed individual schools to use their discretion. So we don't want to have a blanket policy that says every basketball court's going to be closed at nine, nine P. M. That wouldn't be fair to those schools where that's going on and there's no problems. But where there has been issues in the past, we've allowed those schools, those principals and those engineers, to resolve those problems by either removing the rims over the summertime or making some other accommodations to limit the use. So so that's kind of where we are with that.
Yeah, I think Mr. Muston uncovered it all. So I did get complaints this year from a neighbor of one of our schools. And his complaint was at two A. M., people playing basketball, using their car to light up the court, the language, the paraphernalia that was left. And I did recommend to the principal that at the end of the school year, that the nets come down so that he doesn't, you know, so that the neighbors aren't dealing with that all summer long in the middle of the evening or the middle of the night. Because I don't know about you, but at two A. M., I'm in bed. As a principal, when I was a principal there, I would always leave one night where I would not approve permits so that I could host parent nights and honors nights and different activities for the school. So I had one night that that we could do all those sorts of things. So lots of different things go into approving or not. But it is important that if we have community groups using the facilities, that they are filling out a permit, even if it's for outside, because sometimes I would have kids leaving from a school activity and cars whipping through the parking lot. And if they didn't have a permit for the field, then I didn't know who to contact to talk to about the possibility of putting students in danger. So we have a process. I think we're we wouldn't take we wouldn't take basketball nets down unless there was a reason to, because we do have, I live in the community, community schools, but there are some reasons where it just makes sense.
Yes, trustee Barry.
I know you're just delivering a message here, but when you say late at night and at two A. M., I mean, where does the police, when does the police get involved in something like that? I mean, I know they're posted.
Yeah, the recommendation is, have you called the police? I have, it continues and it hasn't stopped.
So with with our neighborhood schools, mostly elementaries, there's usually that one neighbor that's going to call you, and they're going to call the administration, and they're going to call the board president and complain and complain and complain. If it's if somebody's abusing our facilities, they need to be prosecuted. If somebody is there after, I guess it's, I believe it's nine A. M. or nine P. M. or ten P. M.
Whatever the curfew is.
Whatever the curfew is in the area, yeah. I mean, they're trespassing. Those need to be dealt with. It just, I truly don't believe it's fair that you drive by some of these schools and, you know, and the facilities, and they got the nice flowers out there, and the kids are playing basketball, and there's parents walking with their kids around the track. Then you walk, you drive by another school, and, you know, with all the respect, I won't even use that term, it just doesn't look good. It just doesn't look good. The rims are down, nobody's there, it's like vacant. I mean, what's what is it? I mean, if we have, I don't know, about twenty some elementaries, I know with the current financial situation going with the city, they're closing pools, they're closing, you know, parks, the whole nine yards. And if the facilities are there and it's they actually belong to the taxpayers, I think we should have like, you know, yeah, the principal needs to monitor it, but we should have a uniform policy for 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 every building. I don't think it's fair if I live in a certain part of the community that just that one neighbor that, you know, that school was there fifty years before you moved into the neighborhood, you know, that's wrong. You know, if somebody's just because they're complaining for whatever reason. Don't get me wrong, if somebody's there on our property trespassing, prosecute, prosecute, prosecute. Somebody's there at two o'clock in the morning, I think they, I won't say what we need to do, but okay, I think you get my message.
I'm just going to speak at, I'm going to wear a completely different hat. I'm president of the Federation of Neighbored Associations, and I've heard the complaints from neighborhoods, and it's not just one person usually, it's the whole row of homeowners who are backed up to certain properties. It's not all of the schools that have that configuration. But and and I will tell you, it's not just one person who's the angry grouch in the neighborhood who's complaining, generally speaking. And they've they have gone to the police repeatedly. Now, I will tell you that this is a low priority for the police on a Saturday night when there's a lot of other things going on in the community at two A. M. And so that's not going to get addressed right away. And if you're in a neighborhood where every single weekend, you're awakened by the noise and the foul language, and quite frankly, I know for a fact of a couple of schools where a lot of fights broke out. They were corner schools that were visible to a lot of young adult males who didn't necessarily even come live in the neighborhood. I don't know where they came from, neither does anybody else. But the fact is, is that it was an attraction because the it was available. And so the police were called on a regular basis, and it still didn't put a stop to it. Now, whether they were prosecuting these individuals or not for trespassing, I don't know. That I can't tell you. But quite frankly, a lot of times, these things go to court and are slap on the wrist, and it doesn't stop the problem from keeping on reoccurring. And the police department, do we really want them to be when there's a more permanent solution for the for an ongoing situation? And I quite frankly was approached by the police on several occasions to see if the school district could do something about it because they were being called on a regular basis. So it's kind of like a shared responsibility at that point. I understand what you're saying, that it's not fair to the students. Most of the time, we can find a location on the school property where we can still have rims up for those for the students to be able to use during the summertime. That's not backing up to private property. If that's a solution, we can consider it. But quite frankly, you know, the the local parks also have had issues with with and have had to consider. I sat in on on one of the recreation commission's meetings where a whole neighborhood was up in arms with what was going on at their particular park during the summertime and the abuse of the, and they wanted those rims taken down and something else offered because of the abuse that was going on with the young adult males at night. So it's not just the school playgrounds that are are seeing this kind of behavior. It's a tough subject, and unfortunately, we're going to have to find a way to balance it. But it's not just one neighbor, generally speaking, who's having an issue.
There's usually that one neighbor.
Well, that's that's a generalization that's really not necessarily.
President Peskov, you keep saying that, you know, some of our, I can't think of one building that's not right in the middle of the neighborhood where there's residents right there. Almost all of our.
But not all of but not all of the basketball rims are located at the back.
It doesn't have to be just basketball. I mean, I'm talking about.
Well, that's generally what's what's being used that we're talking about.
So if the city's having problems with the parks and, you know, we're having some problems with some of the, you know, the schools, what do we do? I mean, we need to, we need to talk about that subject. I mean, we, you know, I remember growing up, it was the best thing we ever had, the parks, the pools, it was part of Dearborn. We used to have rec night, you know, three, three, two, two nights a week at the line of school and Saturday mornings. You know, those two days were just unbelievable. We keep talking about we want our kids away from their phones, away from the electronics. What options are we giving them? So I think we need to keep, we need to keep this discussion. We can't solve things tonight. We need to keep this discussion going.
It's never the first.
Whatever policy.
It's not the first. It's the last resort. It's always the last resort. And in the place that I did recommend it, there is a park one block down.
So it's not like it would be the first choice. It's a lot of complaints. And and there is some danger with that if there's a lot of, if there's if the police are getting called and unable to do something, we can lock the gates. There's lots of, it's, it's not, it's not ever, it was nothing I would ever say as a first choice to do. But we are blessed in a city with lots of parks. I do know that the rec department has changed their courts to be half courts for very similar reasons.
For that reason, yeah.
So but it would never be a first, first thing to come out of our mouth.
It's a tough decision. It's a social issue in some regards to behavior. So, you know, but it's, it's not fair to penalize a neighborhood of individuals who have to, who can't move, who are there when when there's another solution at that moment, which is unfortunately, it might be to remove a basketball rim, and the children will have to find an alternate avenue. But it doesn't mean that it's completely taken away. And I'm not sure which school you're talking about that you have the concern with.
It's not any particular school. I just think the policy needs to be equitable. How do we tell one of our constituents that you live in this part of town, and this is the way we're going to treat it, but on the other side of town, we're going to treat it completely different? I just don't think that's fair. There is no particular school. If you want to talk a particular school where my kids went to, my kids are almost thirty years old, so we're talking about over twenty years ago, those basketball rims, first day in June, they go down. And I approached them, and so I said, I live around the corner, I can help, I can, you know, didn't want to hear it. No, I'm not talking to any particular schools, just in just in general. What do we, what do we tell, without mentioning neighbors, what do we tell those those parents or the students or whatever, that you chose an area that, I mean, we don't want to go there right now, but what do we tell them? That's not fair. That's all I'm saying, and we need to keep this, we need to find a solution.
Mary.
Yes, trustee Thor.
I know that I got some calls last summer when school was out about vandalism at a couple of the elementary schools. Are we continuing to add video surveillance on our buildings that could also possibly assist us when we have those instant instances?
That's part of the bond work that we're doing right now. We're looking at additional cameras in the middle schools and some elementary schools if necessary.
Thanks.
Trustee McDonald.
I have a couple of questions. I know in my neighborhood, there are some, and particularly elderly folks, that like to walk to the track and use the track, and it's really good for them, and it keeps them spry. And there's one gentleman in particular that I talk to often. He was a World War II vet. So I mean, just to get him, and that's what he lives for, twice a day he does this. But I'm just curious, what are the hours? Are they not allowed to do that during school hours or it's as long as it's like not a group of is just individuals?
During school hours and specifically for school.
That's what I thought, okay. And I think he's aware of that, but I just wanted to make sure that people knew that. So as long as it's before or after school, then it's open to the public or during the summer. My other question, well, it's more of a statement. I have had, and I believe this particular issue has been taken care of, but I'm just thinking that it may go on in other buildings, and no one has informed the administration. It was an ongoing problem, it would be solved, and then it would come back and be solved for several years. There was a resident that the floodlights of the school, when they came on, they were aimed at her bedroom, and they were bright. And and then they were directed again down, and then a few months later, again. So as far as I know, that situation has been taken care of. I haven't talked to her a while, but she usually she lets me know. But I just want people to be aware in the buildings where those floodlights are, because they should be, I would assume, be mostly pointing down and maybe out a little bit, but not straight across in someone's bedroom. So just wanted to bring that to attention because not everybody voices a complaint, and then they just think we're being bad neighbors.
Right. So. Trustee Melvin.
Thank you. I actually, I'm aware of that situation that you're talking about, President Peskov, and I actually worked with that neighborhood to take one of the rims down, and that alleviated actually the problem. And it's very unfortunate in that park, it's so close to the houses where these people would come with cars from outside the neighborhood and play at the park at night. And it's a city park, it's not a school park. But I'd like one thing, at the same time, that we're really, I'm really pleased that, you know, our facilities are open to our community partners. I know I worked with Dr. Malenko to get some of the soccer teams that wanted to use Woodworth and other middle schools for soccer, and now they're paying for it, and they're happily using it. So it's a great resource for our community. It's a delicate balance. I, one thing that I want to add, I think on the city relations committee, that we still need the police to really enforce these kind of situations. If somebody's at the park past ten P. M., they shouldn't be there. And the police should be there, and they should be ticketed. I know at Morningside Park, they were just given, you know, a warning, go home, and they're not giving them, you know, the the real consequences of you're being ticketed. And if that's going to happen moving forward, then probably they're not going to come to the park past ten P. M. So I think that we want to put that on the agenda for the city relations committee.
Yeah, it is, trust me, because of my relationship with, it's been discussed many times over the years, and I do continue to ask, because one of my questions still continues, and and this is something I've complained about since the day we put the astroturf in, especially at Dearborn High, and and Dr. Ball knows how I feel about it because there is a Sunday group of young gentlemen who jump the fence, it's padlocked, and use it to their enjoyment. And it's a regularly attended activity there. And I used to go in the past with my I. D. and go up to the fence and say, do you have a permit? Because I see the padlock still on here. And they'll give give me a look, and then I'll say, you want to jump the fence? You want me to call the police? And they'll jump it. I said, you're welcome to play down here on the lower field. All you want to, but please don't go trespassing on the fenced-in portion. Now we're in the next phase of having to replace all the astroturf on all of our facilities again, and but I know that this is still an issue. And quite frankly, that's taxpayers' dollars, too. And I've had complaints from community members who say, I don't want my money being, you know, used where it's being abused and and it's going towards this. I had somebody complain about the Woodworth fence, she lived right across the street from it, and used to see everybody hop the fence all the time because of the turnstiles and throw their bikes over to get onto the Woodworth track because they couldn't get it through on the fence. And the fence was constantly being repaired because because of the use. So it's not just Dearborn High that has this issue at times. So when we're talking about, you know, I understand wanting the facilities to be available to the community, but they also, we have to be responsible with the money that it takes to maintain them. And sometimes people are ignoring the things we put in place to help protect the money that we've invested and just go ahead because they they just feel they have that right. So are we going to, boy, I'd like to, if I'm going to put some more money into that astroturf at Dearborn High, I'd like to at least make that one area of fencing a little higher, at the same time, a little, a little tougher. I'm not going to say anything else, but a little less accessible would be would be kind of nice. Although my understanding is, is they do, they can, they're, I mean, we've had complaints about them with late night soccer games at Fortson at times and at Etzel as well. I mean, I guess they can climb just about anything if they're determined. It's just my two cents.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a notice to the board that we, you know, the calendar, the proposed calendar for next year has been in briefs, and it'll be on the agenda next month for approval, which is what we usually do in June unless there's some comments.
And take note, there is a Tuesday night meeting, too.
Because of the.
Because of.
I think it's the spring break, yeah.
It's some holiday, yeah.